Good evening, everyone. Call the City Council to order at eight o'clock on Monday, December 19th, 2022. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, with the stance: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to our last meeting of 2022. We have 20 items on this evening's agenda, and I will ask the clerk to please read Agenda Item Number One.
Minutes of the City Council Meeting, December 5th, 2022.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file in minutes. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, minutes are filed 11-0. Agenda Item Number Two.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the application for a special permit from Attorney Brian Falk on behalf of Octo48 LLC DBA Action Precision Machining to convert a pre-existing non-conforming warehouse use to a machine shop at 269 Mechanic Street, Order Number 22-100, 8741.
Okay, this public hearing will be taken in four stages. First, with the public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. Second, questions from the public. Third, public speaking in opposition. And finally, the fourth part, questions from the City Council. So we'll open the first part of the public hearing with the public speaking in favor. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, President Austin. For the record, Brian Falk, attorney at Myra G. Connell, 100 Front Street in Worcester. Appearing on behalf of the applicant, Octo48 LLC, which is doing business as Action Precision Machining. With me from Action is owner George Manjo. As mentioned, this is an application for a Section 6 finding special permit to modify the pre-existing non-conforming warehousing use of this property to a machine shop, a light manufacturing use. This is the existing building at 269 Mechanic Street.
It's coming.
It's coming.
Apparently a little slow.
I gotta be patient. There it is. Building has been at the site since the early 1900s and used for commercial purposes. George's father actually operated a business from this building in the 60s and 70s. You may recall this property was rezoned from limited industrial to residential B in 2019 as part of a plan to build a residential project at the property. That plan did not move forward, but the site has remained in commercial use, and it's now a pre-existing non-conforming use with that change to a residential zone. So it's legally pre-existing non-conforming. The existing commercial operation can stay there indefinitely, and this is essentially a special permit to allow a modification of that pre-existing non-conforming use. It was most recently used as a warehouse for DN van lines until May of this year, when George bought the property. Just pulling up, this is a colored version of the site plan we submitted with the application. The building is in blue, adjacent to the rail trail. George plans to operate his machine shop in the existing building and does not plan to make changes to the site at this time. So it will largely stay the same, but with a machine shop indoors as opposed to the warehousing use. Action Precision is a tool-and-dye operation, making metal parts primarily for the aerospace industry. There'll be six to 12 people on site during regular hours with six to 12 vehicles during the day. Deliveries will be two to three trips per week of smaller-sized trucks. George is an active owner-operator, and he's on-site most of the time the business is in operation. This use will have a much lower impact to the surrounding neighborhood. The prior warehouse use involved numerous trucks coming and going throughout the day. Action Precision will be a much quieter neighbor. As I mentioned, this is a Section 6 finding special permit under Section 65012 of the zoning ordinance. Unlike other special permits that are typically before the council, the standard of review is a little bit different. The council may grant this special permit upon finding that the new use is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use. We believe the council may make this finding, as George's use will be less detrimental to the neighborhood than the prior use. George has made himself known among the neighbors upon buying the property. We submitted to the council letters in support of this application from three of the abutting property owners, including the owner of the two properties that are on either side of the driveway to this business. That concludes our presentation. Look forward to your questions, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Attorney Falk. Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Any questions from the public? I would ask the city clerk to please read a letter we received this afternoon.
This letter is addressed to the City Council regarding the permit application for Action Precision Machining, 269 Mechanic Street. Dear Councilors, as a 32-year resident of Marlboro living in the home my great-grandfather and grandfather built in 1926, I am writing with my concerns and questions regarding the above-mentioned property. It is my hope, as an abutting property owner, that this property remain residentially zoned. As we all know, there is a great need in the city to create more housing. In 2019, the council agreed that this property was well-suited for residential zoning with its unanimous and uncontested vote. As voted by the City Council, this property is now residential and should remain as such. As stated in July 11th, 2019, that, quote, "this will remain a consistent use pattern for the subject area," unquote. I have great concern that a change in zoning would be used as a precedence for future zoning changes in and around the immediate area and the city as a whole. The current request being voted on is to change from residential to industrial. Past zoning classification should have nothing to do with this change. The zoning was changed to residential for a reason in 2019. With this location being surrounded by all residential homes, it is of a great concern. The City Council supported this change to residential for a reason, and it should not be reversed. A change to reverse this decision in the middle of a residential neighborhood would allow for any future industrial operation to operate if and when there was to be a change in ownership. Questions and concerns? One, answers on the impact statement. Would these answers become part of a permanent order of conditions if approved? Two, would the operation be limited to normal business hours, Monday through Friday? Three, what are the hours of operation? Four, does this include Saturdays and Sundays? Five, impact question 8A. Currently, noise is nonexistent, so it would not remain the same, car radios, diesel trucks running. Six, drainage issues. Will the new owner be responsible and required to repair? Past meetings have addressed the drainage issues. Seven, what size trucks will be entering and exiting the property? There doesn't appear to be enough room for large trucks. Would this mean that they would be using Mechanic Street for loading and unloading? It is extremely presumptuous for the applicant to install signage at the property prior to the council's hearing or even a sign permit. On a personal note, it is my desire and belief that it is important to keep this neighborhood protected and continually work towards creating and establishing a neighborhood setting, along with growing traffic and speeding, creating an increased noise level, all of which has made for a challenging, quote, "right to enjoy one's property," unquote. I am sure that the council and certainly the residents would agree that there are other areas located within the city better suited to place a machine shop or the like to accommodate and/or reverse a change in zoning would be irresponsible by the City Council in further disrupting a neighborhood setting and not allowing for the need for increased housing. In closing, what municipality with any consideration for concern for its residents would change residential zoned area to industrial? I think of your hearing, my concerns, and addressing my questions. Sincerely, Mary Georgie at 270 Mechanic Street.
I don't know if you want to take those now, or do you want to address them in the Urban Affairs meeting?
I'm happy to address some of the questions now, if that's all right. Thank you. So just a few of them. First of all, it's not a zone change. We're not going back. It's still going to be zoned Residence B. So a residential use could come here at any time under the current zoning. But the existing commercial use is allowed to continue essentially indefinitely under zoning. It became pre-existing non-conforming when the zoning map amendment took effect, and it stays that way. And so when you have a pre-existing non-conforming use like this, the City Council may, may, grant a change in use, and that's what we're applying for. But it remains zoned residential. That change isn't being upended here. Business hours, George runs one shift. This is not overnight or multiple shifts. It's one shift. It's generally normal business hours, sometimes earlier as six, but usually more of an eight-to-five operation, depending upon, you know, activity. Not typically on the weekends, the odd Saturday, but not typically operating on the weekends. In terms of noise, speaking with George earlier, his operation over the last 10 years in Lemonster, the same type of use, had no noise issues. It's all inside. He's not doing work outside. Trucks would be coming into the site, loading, unloading, onsite, wouldn't be using Mechanic Street. And these are typically smaller trucks, not typically large wheelbase 40 trucks. And then there was a question about the signage. There was a sign that was put up, and as soon as it was raised to our attention, the sign came down.
Thank you. I'm sure that'll be discussed a little further in Urban Affairs as well, in case any conditions are made. Any other questions from the public? Questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Can go up to the microphone, just state their name. Any members of the public speaking in opposition? If not, I did have a conversation earlier with Mary Georgie. She did want to be recorded as in opposition to the application. Any other members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the City Councilors? Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just have one question. Is the intent to use the entire facility?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions from the City Councilors? Counsel Orem.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know it says "machine shop," but what type of actual work occurs within this machine shop?
Are you comfortable addressing that?
Yeah. I'm a job shop, so I do a lot of specialty work. I do work for...
Want to come up to the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. I do work for different companies that do some aerospace work. There's a bunch of companies down on the Cape that I do autonomous subs that they make down there. I make a lot of parts for those and titanium and things like that. So it's a lot of specialty, one-offs, small production runs. It's specialty work. Does that answer enough?
That's... What I was trying to get to is the noise in my mind is, you know, how much noise is generated? Do you use grinders and welding torches, and does noise get projected out from that?
We do use some grinders, but very little. Most of it's all milling and lathe machines that we do turning with or machining centers, which are all enclosed. Like I said, I've tried to be very courteous to my neighbors in Lemonster, and I've done many a time going outside and talking to the neighbors about noise, and they don't even know what we do because they can't hear what we're doing. And I just don't hear it. And I'm going to try to respect that same point going forward with neighbors as I move in.
Thank you for that update. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Orem. Any other questions from the Councilors? Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Attorney Falk. A quick question, too. What size vehicles will you be using to load and unload there? I mean, are they going to be like minivans-type sizes? The size of the vehicles for delivery?
Some of my raw materials come in in like a flatbed truck or like a box truck, small, you know, straight job. That's what they usually bring it in on. They don't need something that big, but they make a lot of deliveries to other places. I'm just one piece of it. So they stop by, give me one pallet or whatever off the truck, and that's it.
And would they be entering in from...
Yep, and there's a loading dock. There's two loading docks on the building, so...
Because I know way back when we rezoned it to residential, there's some of the issues here with some of the abutters with the easements. Will you be anticipating any change of any easements on that property to widening that driveway entrance?
Future, yes. I was already speaking to the neighbor that owns that piece of property.
Because that was a major issue when we went back to this in the beginning in 2019.
So I've been talking to him about that, and he's in agreement, but we have not made a deal yet.
Because that was one of the biggest things with the prior owner. Thank you, Attorney Falk. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Irish. Any other comments or questions from the Councilors? Questions from the Councilors? Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is in Urban Affairs. Who the Urban Affairs Committee Chairman will be next year is still up for grabs, but once that's determined, there will be a meeting set, I know, for the council. This did go to site plan. I believe you're going back to site plan, so some discussion will be ensuing on the look of the property and making sure that that sort of thing is done through their review, and then we'll discuss... Urban Affairs will discuss it next year. Thank you.
Any other questions from the City Councilors? Questions from the City Councilors? Any questions from the City Councilors? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing and the entire public hearing. As Counsel Roby said, it is in Urban Affairs. Thank you very much. Agenda Item Number Three.
Thank you. Now is the time for the public hearing on the proposed amendments to Chapter 650 zoning relative to certain provisions concerning mixed use and affordable housing, Order Number 22-100, 8721.
Again, this public hearing will be taken up in four stages. First, with the public speaking in favor. Second, questions from the public. Third, public speaking in opposition. And finally, questions from the City Council. So we'll open the public hearing with the public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council members, my name's Katie Roby. I live at 97 Hudson Street, Marlboro. So the amendments to the city code that are before you cover two areas in Chapter 650 zoning. One is for 650, which is definitions usage, and one is for 65026, affordable housing. I'll begin with the definitions. In 650 is Section 17, the Table of Use Regulations. Mixed use is listed in the business use listings and is only allowed in neighborhood business, business and wayside village with a special permit, but in Marlboro Village, it is by right. In the Table of Uses, mixed use has a number 42 beside it. Section 18, Conditions of Uses, is where you can find a description for number 42 and all the other numbers in the Table of Uses. So at this time, I'm not recommending a change to Section 18's current language for 42. However, also within Chapter 650 is 650 Section 5, Definitions Word Usage, which includes a definition of mixed use. I have submitted an amendment to this section. The document the solicitor submitted is replacing the current language with new language. So while mixed use is allowed in several districts in the city, the current language here seems to only care about a, quote, "vibrant downtown atmosphere," unquote. It restricts ground floors of buildings fronting streets or public access ways to non-residential, but does allow for two exceptions with residential on the ground floor. One exception is for a building set behind another building that has commercial uses on the ground floor, and the other allows a residential portion of the ground floor of a building if it is set behind a street-front non-residential use in the same building. There's nothing in the current language to delineate how big that non-residential is versus the residential space, just that it must be fronting the street. I am concerned that developers may take advantage of this exception and submit plans with a small non-residential portion of the mixed use and have as much residential behind it as they can. So rather than try to figure out how an appropriate position percentage to help with this concern, the amendment requires all ground floor of a building fronting streets or public access ways to be non-residential with one exception. That exception would allow dwelling units on the ground floors of a building that is set behind a mixed-use building that has business uses on the ground floor and residential on other floors. This would allow a developer to take a large parcel of land, such as on-site on the wayside village, to be developed as mixed use with the building's fronting Route 20, having lower-level be commercial and upper levels residential, and then have another building behind that building with the ground floor residential. On the other hand, I believe most buildings in the Marlboro Village District would have the lower-level portion be all commercial with residential above just because of the street-front requirement and Granger Boulevard being considered a street and Weed Street a street. The Second Amendment is to 65026, affordable housing. Remember, currently, mixed use is by right in the Marlboro Village, so it only needs site plan review, not a special permit. 65026A currently begins with all special permits granted to applicants to construct multifamily dwellings. It also has an exemption for projects which are granted special permits in the Marlboro Village District. It is clear to me that regardless of where multifamily housing is built and whether it's mixed use or not, it should have a component of affordable housing as a requirement. The proposed amendment adds in language of all site plan approvals granted for multifamily dwellings as part of a mixed-use development, which means that future, by right, mixed-use projects in the Marlboro Village District that are site plan approval only would include affordable housing. It removes the ambiguity in the language of 20 or more versus 19 or fewer units requiring special permits by simply requiring them all to include at least 15% of the units as affordable housing. It removes the ability to buy out this requirement or to allow a builder to build part of the affordable housing off-site. Back in 2015, the $50,000 per unit we allowed a developer to give us for economic development versus building affordable units sounded like a good idea. I think we all know the city can't afford to build affordable units with the funds we receive. The builders argue they will lose income by being required to have affordable housing as part of their project, so I'm sure we will have a lot of discussion in committee on this. Lastly, it amends the exemption for affordable housing for future retirement communities or additions to existing sites. And the final amendment shown in Item 3 is simply to clarify language the solicitor suggested for mixed use described in the special provisions for the wayside zoning that are in the code. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Roby. Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the City Councilors? Any questions from the City Councilors? This will be going to Urban Affairs. We'll save them for the Urban Affairs, okay? Any questions from the City Councilors? Questions from the City Councilors? Seeing no questions from the City Councilors, I'll close that portion of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and this is in the Urban Affairs Committee. Thank you, Counsel Roby. Agenda Item Number Four.
Communication from the mayor regarding gift acceptance in the amount of $100 from the Women's Fellowship First Church awarded to the Conservation Commission to be used for conservation land maintenance and continued work on the trails.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the grant, please.
Motion made and seconded to approve the grant. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, grant is approved 11-0. Agenda Item Number Five.
Communication from the mayor regarding grant acceptance, the amount of $608.48 from the Metro S. Health Foundation awarded to the Health Department to be used for tobacco outreach programs.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the grant, please.
Motion made and seconded to approve the grant. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the grant is approved 11-0. Agenda Item Number Six.
Communication from the mayor regarding grant acceptance, the amount of $1,250 from the Marlboro Foundation awarded to the Council on Aging to be used to assist seniors with heating costs this winter.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the grant.
Motion made and seconded to approve the grant. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the grant is approved 11-0. Agenda Item Number Seven.
Communication from the mayor regarding proposed 10-year lease agreement between the city of Marlboro and First Church in Marlboro for Union Common.
Counsel Pearlman.
Thank you, Mr. President. As many of you know, we are fortunate to have the graciousness of First Church to use Union Common, and we'd like to continue doing that for the next 10 years and beyond, so I would move to approve this agreement.
Motion made and seconded to approve the lease for the next 10 years with the First Church for the use of Union Common. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the lease is approved 11-0. Agenda Item Number Eight.
Communication from the mayor regarding the appointment of Joseph Delano to the Board of Trustees for a three-year term to expire on April 1st, 2024, replacing Lucinda Zomer.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to Personnel.
Motion made and seconded to refer to Personnel Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, it's going to Personnel 11-0. Agenda Item Number Nine.
Communication from the mayor regarding the reappointments to the Library Board of Trustees for three-year terms of Fred Haas to expire on February 7th, 2025, Nina Blumquist to expire on August 26th, 2024, and Samantha Kozler to expire on April 2nd, 2024.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Refer to Personnel.
Motion made and seconded to refer to Personnel Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, it's going to Personnel 11-0. Agenda Item Number Ten.
Communication from the mayor regarding the appointment of Jason Homer to the Library Board of Trustees for a three-year term to expire from the date of council confirmation, replacing Karen Bento, who recently resigned.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you. Refer to Personnel.
Motion made and seconded to refer to Personnel Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, it's going to Personnel 11-0. Agenda Item Number 11.
Communication from Building Commissioner Tin Tway regarding the compliance of the freestanding pylon sign at the Shell Gas Station for 431 Lincoln Street.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move towards seconded and filed for all communication.
Motion made and seconded to accept and file the communication. Any discussion on the motion? Are those in favor? Opposed, the communication is filed 11-0. Counsel Roby.
Thank you. I believe there's already did have a table of notice for suspension, so...
Oh, your microphone.
Sorry. At our last meeting, this was referred to Urban Affairs with some questions regarding what was the issue with the sign and the matter that was before us for granting an extension to have them have extra hours. I'm going to move to suspend, to have this taken from the City Council, I mean, from Urban Affairs and brought back to the council.
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules removed from Urban Affairs. Are those in favor of removing from Urban Affairs? Opposed, it is removed from Urban Affairs and in the hands of the council 11-0. Counsel Roby.
Thank you. Now I'm going to move to approve a one-year extension to Council Permit Number 2022-10846D, which gave the service station located at 431 Lincoln Street operating hours from 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. daily.
Motion made and seconded to approve the one-year operating timeframe for the 431 Lincoln Street Shell Station. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the hours are continued for an additional year 11-0. Agenda Items Number 12 and 13.
Agenda Items 12 and 13 are communications from Assistant Building Commissioner William Payton regarding the request for approval of a flat wall sign for Phoenix BJJ at 160 Apex Drive within the Hospitality and Recreation Mixed Use Overlaid District for the front and rear entrances.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. If it is agreeable, I'm going to take Items 12 and 13 together. I will point out that Item 12 on the agenda says it's the front entrance, but the actual picture shown was for the rear, and in Number 13, where it says rear on the agenda, it was actually a front, but they're the same exact pictures. This is for a new business going in. If you were like me, you wanted to know what Phoenix BJJ was, it's interesting that it's a jujitsu place, from what I could gather. So this is in the Apex where City Council is the sign approval body. Unless anybody has an objection, I'm going to move to approve both of these signs, front entrance and rear entrance. This building sits on Route 20, so they want people to be able to see it as they're traveling on 20, as well as when they're in the inside of the Apex. Thank you.
Motion made and seconded to approve the two sign requests for the front and back location over at Apex Drive. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, so both the front and back signs are approved 11-0. Agenda Item 14.
Communication from the Public Employee Retirement Administration Commission, a PRAC, regarding the required fiscal year 24 appropriation in the amount of $10,650,851.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. As you always say every year, this is the start of the 2024 budget season. This is also an increase from the year prior. Motion to accept and place on file the communication, please.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the communication from PRAC. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, it is filed, 11-0. Agenda item number 15.
Communication from Kevin Gillis on behalf of Northbrook Capital Partners LLC regarding proposed order to accept Jenks Lane as a public way and to accept the municipal easements.
Council Anders?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to refer this to the Public Service Committee, but as we know, it has to, we anxiously await the planning board to do their thing, and then we'll discuss it in Public Services, and then I guess it ends up with the city solicitor. Is that correct?
That is correct. Motion made and seconded to refer to Public Service, the Planning Board, and the Solicitor. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, it is approved to go to Public Service, the Planning Board, and the city solicitor, 11-0. Agenda item 16.
Communication from Attorney Falk on behalf of JW Capital Partners LLC regarding request to extend time limitations on the application for site plan approval to build a mixed-use project at 57 Main Street in the Marlborough Village District until 11:00 p.m. on March 29, 2023, Order Number 22-1008694.
Council Dumas?
Sorry, Counselor. I just want the record to reflect that I'll be abstaining from this vote.
Please let the record reflect that Counsel Dumas will not be participating in this particular item. Council Roby?
Thank you, Mr. President. I thank Attorney Falk for submitting this. I'm going to move to approve the extension. We're just making sure we dot all our i's and cross our t's as the site plan approval for this project.
Motion made and seconded to approve the extension for 57 Main Street till March. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the extension is approved. 10 in favor, none opposed, one abstained. Agenda item 17.
Application for a special permit from Stephen Copper on behalf of Alliance Health and Human Services to renovate 10,490 square feet of the existing building to provide 12 rest home beds at 720 Boston Post Road East within the Wayside District.
Council Roby?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to move to refer this to Urban Affairs, set a public hearing for January 23, and to advertise.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Urban Affairs Committee, set a public hearing for January 23, and to advertise. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, it is, carries to go to Urban, public hearing on the 23rd of January, and to advertise, 11-0. Item 18.
Minutes of Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Counsel Dusset?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file the minutes of the Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the minutes. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, it is approved, the file, 11-0. Item 19.
Plans.
Counsel Pearlman?
Move to refer to the Legal Department?
See, it can be talked. Motion made and seconded to refer to the Legal Department. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, it's going to Legal, 11-0. Are there any reports of committees? Any reports of committees? Hearing none, agenda item number 20.
Order Number 22-1008701B, proposed amendment to City Code, Chapter 125, Personnel, Section 6, Salary Schedule, and proposed job description pursuant to Chapter 125, Personnel, Section 5, Preparation of Classification Descriptions to Create a New Position Entitled Treasury Payroll Manager within the Finance Department. The recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve. Action was postponed to the December 19, 2022 city council meeting, and the advertisement requirement has been met.
Counsel Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee to approve the salary schedule and the job description, please.
Okay, so there's two votes required. We'll take the first one. So the first one is a motion to approve the salary ordinance, which is an ordinance change. So any discussion on the motion before we go through the four stages? Seeing none. Are those in favor suspending the first reading and approving the second reading? Are those in favor? Opposed, that carries 11-0. Are those in favor of the passage to be enrolled? Are those in favor? Opposed, that carries 11-0. Are those in favor of the passage to be ordained? Favor, opposed, that carries 11-0. Is there any objection to passage in one evening? Seeing none, the ordinance for the Treasury Payroll Manager is approved, 11-0. And there's been a motion made and seconded to approve the job description?
Motion to approve the job description is...
Motion made and seconded to approve the job description for the payroll manager. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the job description is approved, 11-0. Before, I ask Counsel Dumas for a motion. I'll announce our next meeting is January 9, Monday, January 9, 2023. All right, Counsel Dumas?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, it's been made and seconded to adjourn. Are those in favor of adjournment? Opposed, everyone wants to go home. All right, we are adjourned at 8:34.